All right, well, we are going to call this meeting to order. This is the March 13 Kensington Town Council meeting. First item on the agenda is a moment of silence. Of course, we want to remember our former mayor Jane Plank, who passed away on February 23rd. Jane was served as our mayor for four terms and then went on and had a very illustrious career after her mayorship. So she's a very interesting woman. I also want to lift up Dave Bodett, his family on the loss of his father, as well as his mother's ongoing health issues. Is there anyone else who'd like us to remember or offer our thoughts on?
Yeah, if we could lift up Mayor Bor Matasoo is a staff member at Sienna School, which is where one of my sons Finn goes to. But she was the victim of the attempted carjacking at Wheaton Mall last Saturday and was shot. She's in the ICU. She's going to have a long road ahead of her, but he's a big part of the Sienna community. And it was very shocking to hear from the school this morning just how close gun violence, not just proximity, but within our greater community is struck to Kensington.
Yeah, that's terrible. I know they're having a lot of problems up there and it's just not that far away from us. I was with a resident with Anne and I were meeting with the resident that morning and she was, she left the meeting and was headed up to Wheaton to go to Costco. So I was thinking about her when I heard about that. So fortunately she was okay, but hopefully the teacher will recover. But as you said, it's going to be a long road. Anyone else? Okay, well, if we can bow our heads for just a moment. Okay, thank you very much. All right, we'll move down to the approval of the minutes. Council, everyone received a copy of the minutes as well for the town meeting, as well as our work session on the 6th of March. Has everyone had a chance to look those over? Is there any corrections? Okay, if not, can we get a motion on the approval of the town council meeting from February 13?
Sure, I move that we approve the minutes from the February 13 Kensington Town Council meeting.
Is there a second? A second, all those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much. I need a motion for the special town council work session or closed, excuse me, closed session. Eighty minutes.
I move that we accept the meeting minutes from the closed session of March 6.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move down to the mayor and the town council. Again, we're acknowledging the mayor and council had a closed session on Monday, March 6 to consider the acquisition of real property for public purposes. And we were consulting our council for legal advice. And then tonight we're being asked and we'll get to that. Did you want to take care of that now, Matt? The town of Chevy Chase antisemitism resolution?
Sure, Todd Hoffman, the town manager of Chevy Chase was on the call, but he left. But let's proceed. I don't, he's left a few minutes ago. I don't think he's going to come back. But we were asked by the town of Chevy Chase, they passed an antisemitism resolution last week and they are asking all the municipalities within Montgomery County to either adopt the resolution or become a signatory. The resolution was included within the public documents and you also have it in your documents. And I know council member Lipter and I spoke about this last week. So, and she also spoke with a council member with Chevy Chase, Joel Rubin, if she would like to include any additional information.
Um, thank you, Matt. I was not able to connect with Joel directly right before this meeting, but we did speak a few weeks ago when he was preparing the resolution. And I know about his effort to have municipalities join together and supporting the resolution. I will also remind folks that Mayor Tracy and I have been talking with the Montgomery County Municipal League Chapter about working together with other municipalities to combat antisemitism and also what we've seen with white supremacist activity in the region. I know that my conversations with folks, there's a strong interest in showing a united front across the municipalities. Our town stepped forward in November adopting a resolution against all forms of bigotry, including antisemitism. And as you know, we held a community training and forum in January that was very well attended with about 80 people with the Montgomery County Police Department and the Anti-Defamation League. A big topic of discussion that night was the rise in antisemitic incidents that we've been seeing. And even as many of you unfortunately know, right after that training, there were flyers distributed to our neighbors right outside the town of Kensington and Kensington Estates. So I do think it's important that we work with other municipalities, that we adopt this resolution, calling out the antisemitic incidents that we're seeing and the trends that are rising, not just in Montgomery County, but around the country. I would note that if you've reviewed the materials, you can see that more than a resolution, this action is calling for municipalities to identify actions they would take. And I think that's something we can talk about as a council. We can talk about with our residents, but I think there's an opportunity to build on what we've done before with the ADL training to support additional community events that we could do in tandem with municipalities. We could offer up our town hall as a venue. We could support efforts in the schools to expand education as well.
Do you want to adopt the resolution or do you want to just vote to support the resolution?
I was going to ask you, Matt, if in your conversation with the town manager, if they discussed that with you.
So Todd just mentioned either being a signatory or adopting it. I thought since we had already previously adopted our own resolution, motioning to be a signatory would be fine. And then I would notify Todd and the town of Chevy Chase that we agree to support this resolution and plan to work with them in all the Montgomery County municipalities.
Yeah. I'm curious what others think. I mean, I think it would be good to adopt it because it specifically focuses on antisemitism directly. And, and there has been this increased targeting against Jewish people and Jewish institutions. And then along with that adoption of the resolution, we would commit to work with the other municipalities, including Chevy Chase.
Okay, I mean, I think that's what we've been talking about is to get more involved or to reach out to the municipalities and get, you know, us all on board. So I think this is a good step towards that. So do you want to make a, does anybody have any questions about this?
No, I fully support it. I'm prepared for whatever motion Anne would like to bring.
Just, just curious and interested in hearing what we, you know, to, not tonight, but some point follow up on what else we can do. The points you made about bringing in schools, using town hall. I know that one of the, one of the feelings coming out of the ADL training was that people wanted more. They wanted to be able to do more. So we, I think we can provide that.
Yeah, thank you, Nate. That was also a topic of discussion at the racial justice committee meeting is how to build on the ADL training and provide people with more resources. And I've already been thinking about additional training that could be done to help people have conversations within their families and with their neighbors.
Good, well, just a reminder to the council, we are meeting with the county council on Thursday for the MML chapter meeting. And hopefully this will be an issue that we'll discuss as well as other issues going on in the county. But I think that would be helpful for us to know because I know they've been having a lot of forums as well. And of course, in the schools. Darren, did you have any comments or?
No, I, I don't know that Chevy Chase or MML really knows what the end product looks like. So I don't know that it's material, whether we sign on or adopt it. I think the point is just to, you know, join with the other municipalities and say, yes, the county has spoken out, the municipalities have spoken out and, and, you know, together we can hopefully have an outsized effect.
Okay, does anybody in the audience have a question regarding this topic?
Hi, it's Anne Banville. Trying to get, yeah, sorry about that bad thing. I approve and applaud all these efforts. And I've noted, Anne, in particular, that around the country Holocaust survivors or children of Holocaust survivors are speaking out about their experiences, especially to younger people. And I wonder if that isn't an idea that we could consider within our region or perhaps Kensington, just like to put that out there on the table for consideration.
Thanks so much, Anne, for that suggestion. I do think that's exactly the type of community educational forum that we should explore hosting. And I think they can be done in a way that are very meaningful for all ages. And we certainly have a wealth of organizations that we can partner with in the Kensington area to pull that off. So I really appreciate that suggestion.
Okay, good. All right, well, not seeing any other hands. So would someone like to make a motion to, or Anne, would you like to make a motion to, to adopt the resolution from the town of Chevy Chase?
Yes, thank you. I move that we adopt the resolution against antisemitism from the town of Chevy Chase. And that in so doing, we resolve to work with the town of Chevy Chase and other municipalities and the county to combat antisemitism and create a safe community for all.
Is there a second? Connor, I saw Connor's hand first, Nate.
Sorry, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we will move on. Joseph's Park, Matt or Connor, which one would you like to start the discussion on that?
Matt, I'll defer to you, Connor.
Okay.
It's your neighborhood.
Sure. We held a meeting at Joseph's Park. Ooh, is this last week with residents? We notified about 55 nearby residences to start a conversation about the possible sale of Joseph's Park, which is located at 3420 Pliers Mill, at the corner of Pliers Mill and Wheatley. The, it was, we had a very nice turnout. Didn't count the exact number, but let's say eight, 10 residents who came out. And we looked at the property. We looked at the trees on the property. We talked about, you know, its use over the last years and really decades, as well as, you know, what it could potentially be used for, as well as, you know, why the town is looking at potentially selling it now. And we are looking at other property within the business district along Howard and Montgomery avenues. It's the M&amp;T Bank drive-through building right near the Mark station that we are interested in purchasing in order to create a parking district to benefit our business district and the farmer's market and, you know, the greater activity that's happening along Howard Avenue. So the biggest thing I want to leave with everybody, obviously no decisions have been made. We are simply starting the conversation about the use of Joseph Park as it is today. If it were to be sold, how the town would go about selling it? So we talked about different items we may put into a covenant that would go into the sale. We talked about what the buildable envelope of the property is in the sense that there, it being a corner lot, it has 25 foot setbacks along Pliers Mill and along Wheatley. It has the same rear yard and side yard setbacks as the rest of the town, which makes the actual building envelope of the lot fairly small in the sense that it would not be a massive house that would go there. And then we listened and we heard from a number of residents, just their thoughts. We heard, I think, a spectrum of ideas from, yep, I think it would be great to sell it as a single-family residence, some that would prefer to keep it as a park or just open green space. And then just a general conversation of is there an identity that could be forged in the park? Matt, I will leave it to you to talk about what potential next steps may be.
So I clarified with town attorney Ferguson on Friday how to proceed, specifically with regards to holding a public hearing on the property and how the sale would proceed. And she clarified that the state would require an ordinance in order to sell the property. So she recommended that what the council does is if they concur to have staff proceed with doing a closed bid on the property. And once we set the deadline for the closed bid, we'll introduce an ordinance at which time a public hearing will be established. And then the council will have the opportunity to accept or decline any bids received. So essentially what we would do is we would market the property, accept bids and then hold a public hearing and make a determination whether we're going to accept the bid or not. Within the ordinance, it would state that the town has the right to decline a bid based on the public comments that we would receive at the public hearing.
Counsel, does anybody have any questions for Matt or Connor?
Yeah, I just, if I can, Connor, when you said discuss any of the covenants that would be put into it, can you describe a little bit more what you mean by that?
Sure. A couple of the things that we were looking at and we just talked about was if we were to go to sell this as a council, how we would direct staff of anything that we would like to see maintained within the property. So for instance, we did a tree inventory. Yeah. We looked at, at the trees, the health of the trees, the species of the trees, and then looked at, you know, would some of those trees be something that we would want to put into a covenant that to, to the bidders, they would know those trees that we are asking have to be, have to remain on the property? We also talked about other items that would be identified. Obviously, you know, we know about the setbacks. Matt, remind me, I mean, we talked, you know, maybe where driveway location would be, other such things as that.
Yeah, there's some issues with a lot. Yeah, there's, there's, there are some issues with the lot. As council member Crimmins noted, the building envelope is not as large as the property. It's a corner lot, so it technically has two front yards. So a 25 foot setback would be required on both Pliers Mill and Wheatley. Then you will be required to have a rear setback of 20 feet and a side setback of 10 feet. So, you know, there's, you're limiting how large a house can be. The height of the house can be a maximum of 35 feet. And then from the Wheatley side, there are some topography issues if they decided to put the curb cut there. Currently, the property is addressed at Pliers Mill. Just viewing the lot, my guess is that they'd switch that over to Wheatley Street if it's sold. We did discuss, you know, possibility of maybe putting covenant on the trees. You know, and it's, it's, you're not going to probably get a 5,000 square foot home in this lot like you've seen in some other areas, especially on the north side of town. You're probably looking at something maybe in 3,000 to 3,500 square feet.
To reduce that, I guess, one of the questions around the covenants, the things we're explaining is to reduce that uncertainty. Can we put that as one of the covenants, size limitation, since it is our, our property?
We probably could. We'd have to make that known within the, within the open bids. So they're aware what they, what they're bidding on.
Got it, thank you.
Obviously, if a tree that we want them to keep dies under construction, then I think we were looking at probably asking for a tree count that so many trees are put back on the property. So anybody else have any questions before I open it up to the audience? Anne or Darren?
Yeah, I, well, I guess I have a comment. And obviously, you know, I want to reemphasize that we've not made a decision to sell. But I, I think in, you know, at least my initial thoughts regarding covenants and tree canopy and size of the house. I mean, anything that we do is going to affect the value of the property. And if the goal is to, you know, help be responsible for an acquisition that we're planning, I'd want to be careful before we, we put covenants on lots that are really identical to all their surrounding lots, except this one in perpetuity will have this kind of Frankenstein covenant to it that people won't necessarily know of until they get deep into it. So I would just want to be careful that we don't impact the value on it. But so that's, that's a comment, but obviously there's going to be more discussion on this than tonight. Matt, I guess I would like to explore a little bit this idea of sealed bids. I sort of understand the idea of using sealed bids when, I mean, I don't know, we're getting rid of an old truck or an office desk or something. My concern with using a sealed bid here, if we don't have to, is that we have a much more efficient, broad-reaching opportunity to, you know, draw in people. I feel like using sealed bids, even if we market it, it'll, it'll attract the attention of people whose careers focus on, you know, combing through records of surplus property. Whereas I think if it's, if it's a vacant lot, I mean, typically you go to a Realtor and you go on MLS and you reach, you know, orders of magnitude more people who might be interested in the property. So I'd be concerned about limiting it to sealed bids if we don't have to. So I guess if you haven't already addressed that question with Sue Ellen, I'd like to see if there isn't an opportunity to, you know, have it be more put on the open market if we make the decision to sell it.
So Sue Ellen recommended the closed bid, but that does not limit us from marketing the property. You know, she, she used this recommendation from past properties. She's sold on, you know, with other municipalities that she's worked with. And it's not a requirement that we accept the bid. We could go through this process and decline them and then decide to put it, you know, you know, on redfin or something like that. It's up to the council. This was the recommendation of Sue Ellen.
Okay, I guess I'd like to know a little bit more about that just because I, I do want to feel like if we do sell this, that we've done the, the most efficient way of selling a piece of property, which, you know, to me is more like, I, it just, you know, I'm a Realtor, but I feel like it's, it's, um, it's probably through putting it onto MLS listing rather than a sealed bid.
Okay, well, we can, we can talk more if we get to that point with Sue Ellen. So she can, I know, I think one of it was we wouldn't actually list it with a Realtor, so there wouldn't be any, you know, additional money to pay.
Commission.
Commission money on their end. So I know that was one of them. And then she actually can handle the transaction, the town attorney. So I think that was some of that.
And that if we had a $45,000 sale price and we entered into a 5% commission, I think that's like a $22,000 fee. But I, I guess I would question whether the increased exposure of that property and the potential for the, you know, the typical home buyer to be shopping through a Realtor rather than through a sealed bid process might more than make up for that, that real estate commission that we would be incurring. So again, we don't need to settle it tonight necessarily, but I, I think I come down, at least at the outset, if we go forward, wanting to go forward through the MLS rather than through sealed bid.
Okay. Anne, I saw you had a question?
Yeah, I'm glad Darren asked that question. I was also curious about the rationale for the sealed bid. So look forward to hearing more on that. Just curious with the meeting with the neighbors, maybe you mentioned this Connor, about how many people turned out?
Yeah, I mean, eight to 10, Leslie Olson, keep me honest, about eight to 10 residents, not counting Matt and Alex and me. But I'd say there's, yeah, eight to 10 residents.
Okay, thank you. And thanks for organizing that. And then I just wanted to share with the full council and those here tonight that I did ask the Greenscape Committee to take a look at the site and at the inventory that Mulhern had done. And they were able to do that. The reaction from our committee members was that some of the specimens on the property are really more like shrubbery, like the U's in the middle of the property and that some of the larger trees are already under threat from the ash borer, as was noted by Mulhern's inventory. And so there was a sense that there, there may not be able to save those trees. And so it wouldn't make sense to have a covenant around trees like that and that perhaps, you know, efforts should be instead, you know, what I talked to them about was, well, maybe we can think about how to encourage if the property were sold, if the property were redeveloped, having new trees planted in a place and in a way that, you know, could add to, add to the tree canopy. Because we also weren't sure, depending on the restrictions on development for the lot, if even if remaining trees, their root structure could be so disturbed that they may not survive or what would happen with the water drainage? Would that also interfere in some way with the trees? So there were just a lot of questions and no clear recommendations about which trees were worth protecting. There was a sense that you probably wouldn't be able to, it might not be worth the effort to do a covenant to protect the trees and perhaps better to focus on, you know, how to add trees to any future development if the property were sold.
Okay. Thank you, Anne. Anyone in the audience have a question? Leslie? Leslie Olson, I have two lists.
Leslie Olson, Wheatley. I was part of the committee, the group, not committee, but the group that met. And it was good to, to be able to have that meeting. And we also had a copy of the tree report. And I recall most of them were in the excellent to good category of the seven or eight that were noted. And I do know that the land has always been called a park, but it's never truly appreciated. It's never had any of the amenities of park, no benches, no place to actually sit or also has a difficult access to it. So my opinion is it's a very valuable green space to the area. And I know that comment was expressed. And there was another comment saying that the, the idea of the town selling the land is so contrary to what it stands for and promotes in its mission statement and objective. I'm surprised that the offer to sell would precede a public hearing on how to proceed. A lot of people will spend time and money and effort to make a bid and then it's opened up and people will either support it or they won't. But it seems to me having a more complete survey of the opinion of selling town land would be first before proceeding with a sale. It's, it is almost like it's a done deal as it moves along and as you've had discussions, et cetera. And, and I think it would be unfortunate to lose the green space. I understand the need for parking. But it's at the sec, it's at the loss of the residents of the north side of town for a benefit for the entire community. I, it's a difficult, it's a difficult trade-off. I would hope that the rest of the town would support retaining that green space. But I'm afraid that most don't know about it. And I can see from the count on people attending tonight, it's about 17. So I don't know how widespread this venture is. How much? How much promotion the sale has actually received?
Okay, anything else?
Just to clarify, we are planning hearing in April if we have a sense that we want to move forward, because we have to have a hearing for an ordinance. And, and there would be further public input at that time as well. I don't, I don't think this is the end of the, um, end of the public discussion about this.
Is that after the bids have been received or before?
Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but the point of the ordinance would be to direct the sale through, you know, at this, at least this point, a closed bid process.
Yeah, so we would need to, we would need to introduce an ordinance and set a public hearing to sell the property. So that's when the public hearing would occur. And then within the ordinance, we would need to state that if we accept a bid, we have the right to decline it based on public comment. So technically, from what, what Town Attorney Ferguson stated was, is that you're setting the public hearing before the sale of the property with the expectation that you're receiving bids. So we would give a deadline, we would, we would give a deadline to accept the bid. So I, you know, I'm just making up a date. Let's say July 1st. Bids are due by July 1st, and then we would hold a public hearing at the July council meeting. Now, if we go to market, which is not what the town attorney recommended, but it does, she didn't say we couldn't do it, you know, then we would need to introduce an ordinance at a different time. We would need to basically, we wouldn't know when it would go to market, and we wouldn't know when we would receive an offer.
Can, can we, regardless of what we do, I'd like to make sure this is on the April meeting as well, that to be discussed. I don't mind giving it two months' worth of sort of public participation. What do you guys think?
No, and that's where, where I was going to Darren. You know, what I heard loud and clear from Leslie was just to request that before we set the public hearing on an ordinance that may lead to a transaction, that we just set an another agenda item. I know we're doing it tonight, but if we, you know, we put it out on the list serve, we put it out in the e-blast, we try and spread it far and wide that at April, we'd like to come back and have a discussion that this is an option that we are looking at and make sure that everybody is aware of it and give everybody an opportunity to weigh in for us to hear comments before we set an agenda item for, with the ordinance.
I'm fine with that. I mean, we're not in a giant hurry, so we have time. I mean.
Leslie, you'll help us spread the word?
I will. Thank you for asking.
Yeah.
I guess I also emphasize, because I somehow become a, you know, one of the longer term residents here, aside from the mayor. There have been a lot of proposed uses for this site, and, and nothing has gone forward. I, I know that at one point there is discussion about using it as a community garden. There's discussion about tennis courts, there's discussion, I mean, there, there are some weird ideas kind of thrown around over the years, a bird sanctuary, a labyrinth, and, and just none of them seem to gather sufficient public interest to, to move forward with them. So I just, I don't want to, I, I don't want to present it to the public as we've never tried anything, because I, I feel like we have.
We actually were, the Greenscape Committee was looking at the labyrinth and, you know, when this came up as an option, you know, we put it on the back burner, but having, you know, if you've ever been to a labyrinth, the whole point is a quiet, reflective, you know, time of, you know, working your way through the maze. Having stood out on that corner, it is not a quiet, reflective space. It is noisy because there's a lot of traffic on Plyar Mill. And I, so it never would have worked there. So I'm not sure, I mean, just putting a bench somewhere doesn't really make it a park, especially when you have a real park just a half a block away.
The, the only other comment I'd like to bring for, because I promised my neighbors I would do it. For those that don't know, my, my property touches this park property on the diagonal. And so my neighbors to my left or to the north and behind me, their property lines abut to this. And we talked about it with both of them. And I talked about, you know, what if we just activate the park and gave some examples like Darren did of previous uses that have come up. And both wanted me to express they, neither one of them was very fond of the idea of trying to activate the park and make it more used, because it, you know, comes right up to their kitchen windows, their bedroom windows, their daughter's bedroom windows. You know, it's not an issue where nobody's really in that park and using it. But if we work to bring activation, this is why other uses couldn't take shape, right? Like, it was identified, hey, what about a dock park? But there are very strict rules as Martin's Editions, Chevy Chase Section 5, I forget which one, learn the hard way.
Village Chevy Chase.
Village, yeah, you can't put those uses abutting residential. And they ended up investing a ton of money and then having to tear it all apart. But the two properties that, property owners that touch it, you know, to me as a neighbor, were just like it, you know, if you guys find a, a use and that use becomes popular, and then, you know, there's a ton of people coming and going, it would really disturb their quality of life.
Okay. Does anybody else in the audience have a question or want to make a statement?
This is Vince Karen, I just have kind of economic questions. So any idea what that lot is worth ballpark wise on the market?
We did have it appraised. Was it 450 or 480, Matt?
It was 450,000. We have received an unsolicited bid for more than that already.
What would the proceeds be used for?
They'd be used to acquire a property on Montgomery Avenue, specifically the MNT drive-through property. We are looking to use that for additional parking within the business district and then potentially working with the state, you know, for a tiered parking structure down the road that would help offset not only the business district, but the Mark Train Station.
So MNT is moving up to the corner on Connecticut and Plyar's Mill, right?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't, yeah.
Is the plan that MNT is moving up to the corner of, of Connecticut and Plyar's Mill?
That's correct.
Correct, yes.
And they own, they own the property where the tell, um, drive-through is as well as their bank property. So they, they, they would be the seller.
Okay, not, not get off on a tangent. So the property across the street from the, from the drive-through bank, that goes on the market for any retail establishment moving there potentially?
Uh, possibly. The building has a lot of issues, so that's why a lot of times you don't see somebody in there. There, um, that it's closed with, for a teller to be there. So they're not going to put a lot of money fixing that up since they're moving.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, not seeing any hands. So council will ask everybody in agreement with going ahead and putting this on the agenda for April as well?
Yes, and if I could make a suggestion, um, hearing the conversation, I think, you know, Leslie's remarks and others, I was, you know, remembering a conversation I had with one of our Greenscape Committee members wanting to understand sort of the town's policies around other green spaces in town. So it might be a good idea as part of that April discussion to just have an inventory of these or other places in town where we also have green space that we hold, so we can sort of consider the full picture and what we're preserving around town.
Okay, good idea. All right, so let's move on to number three, Urban Land Institute, the, the TAP. Nate, did you want to speak to that?
Sure, thanks. And then Connor, you can compliment where I, where I leave out some of the details. I'll try to be brief. So back in December, we agreed as a council to move forward with funding for preliminary analysis or preliminary design for the Connecticut Avenue and University Boulevard split. As part of the, you know, what we wanted to do was tag it on to the bicycling pedestrian priority area plan that is ongoing and under analysis right now with the State Highway Administration, M.SHA. We were trying to see if we could tag on some analysis for that split on how we could improve pedestrian and bicycling issues as well as where, where the Summit Avenue Extended is supposed to end right there at the split, when, if that eventually gets built, as well as improving the movement around that, that split for how traffic flows throughout. So you all, the council approved that. And so Matt and I have been in discussions with the BIPPA people, the BPPA process, and to see if we could get that feasibly tapped on. And in parallel, while that came up, one of our members of the Pedestrian and Bicycling Access and Safety Working Group is actually an expert, participated in one of these technical assistance panels from the Urban Land Institute, where they give advice around an economic development issue and/or transportation issues, expert support to, to start, to start solving, you know, vision towards a problem. And Connor and I had discussed this as a potential option for, for that area, actually, to be able to serve multiple purposes. One of, one of them being to, to, to do this initial preliminary analysis around what that circularity or the movement in that, that split could be. Many of the same things that we had agreed we would move forward with, with the, with the BIPPA process, but also to start to create this vision for the entire area there, not just the terminus of the Summit Avenue Extended and, and the split and, and what, what may or may not happen from an economic development perspective and a, and a growth perspective as, as there's more, you know, properties sell and what could, what could be that area for our, for our town. But also along the corridor that is the Summit Avenue Extended, as it moves up past, past Plyar's Mill, that create, as it moves up north of Knowles through Plyar's Mill, it creates a potential area for envisioning that whole project as a, you know, beyond just a traffic alleviation project and more around economic development. So to make a long story short, what we're asking the council to do is adjust slightly that request for the, the, the funding, to do the more detailed transportation analysis with the BIPPA process and the pedestrian and bicycling issues, but instead divert that first to this ULI TAP, Transfer Technical Assistance Panel, which could be done very, quite quickly. And we think, and Connor, please compliment, we think this would be a really good signal to send to the county that, you know, we've got, we've got skin in the game, we're serious about this, it's a different thing than just, you know, moving more people around our town from a traffic perspective. And it would gel well with the BIPPA process still and whatever comes out of that in, in terms of sequencing. So we think it's, we think it's a better, actually a better way to, to, to do the visioning process, because it can be more holistic and include more issues that we want to consider from economic development to transportation to a host of other things that we could fold into it. And I'm happy to, to, to detail what that would entail in terms of what the advisory panel or Technical Assistance Panel does. But this is, this is really what, what we're coming to you tonight for. Your feedback on it, Connor?
The only thing I'd add, I mean, that was a terrific breakdown. The only thing I would add is the idea of this, which is how I first engaged Nate on it, came at Juneteenth last year, and I had a chance to stand with the county executive and talk about Summit Avenue, because he had made an offhand comment about traffic in Kensington. And he made a comment that he's well aware of the Summit Avenue Extended, but he has a whole CIP full of street projects. And that's where we engaged in a discussion that this is not just a roadway project, right? This is not just about moving cars. This is about reworking our grid for pedestrian and multimodal transportation, but also for economic redevelopment, especially in light of the Thrive Montgomery 2050 Plan that they were, you know, working to pass and have since passed. ULI is highly respected. ULI is who the town used to help develop the sector plan. And they are used frequently or referenced frequently by the county. They're seen as experts in these technical assistance panels would be very good at helping to identify what the potential redevelopment, massing and heights and setbacks, just like they did with our sector plan, but then also to show how it could be activated. Because right now in our sector plan, that whole section imagines that you can only enter and exit the property from Connecticut Avenue. That there isn't activation off the rear, because there's no street off the rear. And this, you know, would help to give a, as they put it, a holistic picture at how we address traffic flow, pedestrian, multimodal transportation and safety, but also to create a green streetscape and then potential infill development within those two boundaries of Summit and Connecticut that can address the things that Thrive is looking for. It can have mixed use development and, you know, residential housing, and we could work to create green space within that area, because we, the town also owns land within that, that section that the Summit Avenue touches. So to Nate's point, and also talking with county council members about this, they too thought this would be a wonderful way for Kensington to help enhance the conversation about what we are looking to get done. And with a respected partner in ULI to bring the TAP forward, that can help to create the visuals and the, you know, set a somewhat of the imagination of the possible around both economic development and land use as well as traffic and pedestrian safety. So that's why I'm, I think this would be a terrific reprogramming of funds.
Okay, that's great. Um, is the, the, I know the BIPPA program, but they're separate, correct? That's, they're just.
Yeah, so the, the BIPPA is essentially our pedestrian bicycling master plan that the state is helping us to facilitate for the entire town plus the West Howard Business Area, that's not technically in the town, plus Kendar, because it's the, it's the BIPPA area. Connecticut Avenue corridor is a very important part of that, but it's not only that. So we had asked them if they would do the traffic and outlook, more detailed analysis as a add-on to that, and it may or may not be possible. Yeah, but, but even so, our fear, or my fear, is that we go, we would go ahead with this more detailed analysis that would be very transit oriented only without considering the, all the other things that Connor and I had said. I think we miss an opportunity to start defining what that means. And, you know, we paying for this support and the service from ULI really allows us to, to, to be, as a community, shaping that narrative and not letting the county executive be the one that's defining what that, this is and isn't.
Okay, no, that's great. I know Mark doesn't have a lot of vision for that area, so I'm glad you and Connor have good vision for that, so. Is there any other questions from the council before we open it up?
Yeah, I, I want to just understand a little bit better what the TAP deliverables would be. I mean, first of all, I think it's a great idea to do the visioning for the reasons that Nate just stated. I have participated in a TAP panel that was sort of a non-traditional TAP panel for Warner Circle several years ago. It was sort of a speed round that we did. And so I don't know that it's representative of what you would expect to get, but I would want to make sure that we're getting usable content after the consultation. And so I wanted to hear sort of what they described the deliverables, deliverables would be.
Yep. So it's a, there's a research that's done beforehand, as I understand it. And they organized the set of experts that are members of the Urban Land Institute. They're all volunteers and they have a professional background in, in various areas of, of the issues that we've discussed here tonight. And then I think there's background research they do, and it all culminates around a two-day workshop where the first day, as I understand it, is And it all culminates around a two-day workshop where the first day, as I understand it, is a kind of a, you know, initial scoping, understanding, you know, really what recommendations or types of recommendations we want out of it. And doing going on a site tour, several tour of the area. Um, and then the the next day, you know, then there's the gathering the sketches and they do that all through the afternoon, I guess, suppose. And then the next day is when they pre- present to us a PowerPoint presentation and then what follows that is a consolidated report with recommendations. And what those recommendations are, I think, are highly determined by the scope of what what we ask from them. So we would want to take care in making sure that we scope it well with them so that we know what we want to get from it. And that we agree on, you know, not only the geographic scope, but also the substantive outputs and outcomes that we want from it.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. And just hearing that description makes me think that it's also going to be really important and that's scoping um to figure out how to have input from Ken Garre community members at that point in the process and not after a um report and presentation comes out or.
You know, without a doubt, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, does anyone in the audience have a question on this topic?
Darren, did you, I didn't know if Darren.
You've addressed everything.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions on this topic? Okay, not seeing any hands, so we'll go ahead and move on. Uh, Connor, number four?
Sure.
So we held a. Good, we're good to do that? Is that what we?
Good one. Oh, I'm sorry. You wanna, you want an action? Sorry.
I think we should.
At that point.
I think we should get an action.
Matt, do we need a motion?
You go ahead and if you want to make a um uh.
We, we need a motion to um to direct the town staff to um expend twenty-five thousand dollars for the Urban Land Institute um T A P.
I will move to um direct town staff to allocate twenty-five thousand dollars for the Urban Land Institute Technical Advisor, Technical Assistance Panel.
Okay, for the, uh, you said twenty-five, right?
Twenty-five thousand and to clarify, the funds will come from the C I P. Um, not, not the general fund, it will come out of the C I P for this.
Okay. All right, is there a second with that amendment that Matt added?
I would, yep, I uh second motion as amended.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now number four.
Number four is a Development Review Board update. We held a D R B meeting on Monday, I think it was like March sixth, um, but it was to discuss one oh five oh nine Summit Avenue, which is at the corner of Summit and Knowles on the northeast corner. The project is known as the Flats at Noel's Station. The applicant for the Flats had submitted a uh modification request to their already approved development plan. Um, the modification, it's a document known as the Statement of Justification or S O J, that's what's in the public packet. Uh, asked for um a handful of modifications to how the building would be used. Uh, namely, there is a commercial element to the building which was presented and approved as live-work units where the work portion of those units was allocated to commercial use, the live portion of those units was allocated toward the residential use. He would like to convert the use from mix, from live-work into um like a short-stay hotel um uh usage, short stay being defined by the county as something under thirty days. Uh, so the proposal was to convert uh roughly about nine or ten of these into uh the short-term stays. So we Development Review Board took that up. I'm just grabbing my notes, give me a second. Um, here we go. Development Review Board took a look at um all of these. We discussed them at at length. What was asked for by the county, this is by Troy Leff, which with Park and Planning, was um, they would like a a letter of support or a, or, you know, a letter from the town, just our feelings toward those modifications. So uh five points came out of the D R B meeting. The D R B recommended um a letter of support. With that letter of support, um, it would be, you know, a letter of general support to the requested modifications in the Statement of Justification for the property. Um, that is to, we support the conversion of the twenty-five live-work units into short-stay hotel units. Our primary interest with this conversion is that it would provide a more vibrant and activated ground floor retail experience of the building. The live-work units were on the ostensibly what was like the third floor of the building and so provided very little activation. Um, we, if we can craft the letter, we believe there is a market for this type of of use, this short-stay hotel use. However, what we want to also convey is that the success of that use eh, we believe would be predicated on the professional management of such a use, right? That a, that it is professionally managed to be able to do bookings, to be able to do check-ins and operations, um uh maintenance on those units, since that would be a completely different use from the residential or the remainder of the the retail commercial use. A second modification was moving some of the resident amenity space, which was interior toward ground floor. They'd like to move that up to the rooftop. That's just something that they are hearing from their um uh marketing people that those type of amenities that are directed toward the residents of the building tend to be received better, are used more, appreciated more when there's more natural light and they can achieve that by putting it on to the roof. Um, the uh, that type of amenity is kind of in the middle of the roof structure and does not count toward the overall height of the building. That is by county zoning. Um, it's not a huge space. I think it's a total of about six hundred square feet. Um, and then, as always, as we talked about it, this being on Summit Avenue, I know we just talked about Summit Avenue, but the discussion of any development, right, along Summit Avenue warrants the discussion about the continued need and advocacy for the Summit Avenue Extended. So with any letter of support, we would also like to transmit language, again stating the town's desire and support, continued support for the Summit Avenue Extended project. Darren, any other comments? Anything I missed?
Nope, I think you got it.
Perfect. Any questions?
Go ahead, Nate.
Thank you, Connor. Um, that's very helpful. Just two quick questions. Um, we're, I guess, what, how do you, if we're going to be supporting this, the letter of support to the change use to these kind of telling units? Is there anything that guarantees them in perpetuity? Like if they would, if it would sell ownership of the building? Would they have to keep them as units? Like, how do we know that that stays as part of the the building?
We don't, just like, yeah, um, like any other building. They could change the use again in the, in going forward, so long as that use of that square footage remains in the commercial retail portion of the mixed use. They are already maxed out on their residential use. They have no more residential square footage capacity. So this came up, the D R B discussed this at length. There's, there's not a mechanism by which they could cr- you know, convert them to these short stays and then just make a market rate, you know, apartments or I I believe this is slated to be apartments. To do that, they would be in excess of their um their residential square footage. That would take a whole uh zoning amendment to the property.
Yeah, okay. And then your point was a very good one around the success of those units is going to be contingent upon how well they're managed. Um, how do we ensure that? What is the mechanism for ensuring that in in in?
Yeah.
Mentioning that in the letter, is there anything that we're asking them to do to ensure that?
You know, it's hard. Yeah, that's where I'm going with my answer.
We can't do anything.
No, yeah, I mean, as we're signaling, that's what we're trying to do. We are signaling to that property owner that we are supporting this at face value, you know. I look at it and I think about populations that that I serve in my work at Walter Reed who are there with wounded, ill and injured. And they talk a lot about the fact that there are some hotels, right? There's Poops in Marriott and there's stuff up at Pike and Rose. It's not exactly the closest, um, but it's also really expensive. And oftentimes they can't string together a week or two weeks or they don't know. And so I do see there's a, there's definitely a potential for market. What we were doing and talking about as the D R B is signaling to that property manager that we understand this conversion and our point is we only see this working if it's properly and professionally managed. And one of our D R B members, which was very helpful, right, works for another uh large commercial real estate developer where they, they do do this in some of their buildings. Uh, it's not in every one of their buildings, but I mean, he, he's the one to point it out, right? It's it's not just as simple as changing the name of the usage on a, on a piece of paper. They have to demonstrate a plan that goes with it for how are they going to do commercial laundry? How, what type of housekeeping are they going to do, right? And and the square footage that goes towards that and maintenance and other things and staffing. So to Darren's point, I mean, what we are, as a D R B, after we discussed it, what we are trying to do is just make sure that as we draft a letter, we're signaling that, listen, there could be a use, but this has got to be thought out, professionally executed. This can't just be like, hey, I, I'm gonna see if I can run a professional Airbnb today.
Okay, thank you. And 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 sorry, the last question is just whether you could mention if any of the other, in the discussions, if there are any other, any concerns that came up by the D R B in issuing the letter of support. Um, in 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 particular, I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm happy with supporting this and us doing the letter of support. Assuming that everything else that we put in previous letters of support is being followed or being followed. And I just, I don't know if you guys were discussing that or that came up. Um, but to me, that's important that they're, they're carrying through those other things that we put in previous letters.
Yeah, I mean, we talked a lot about what were the community benefits, right? What are those things that, that's already codified and what was approved by the county? But as far as this change, some of what we talked about was, does this change impact things that have already been seemingly settled by the county, such as traffic, parking, schools, right? So as we kind of went down those uses, uh, especially with the help of, you know, D R B members, this is their profession and trade, that, hey, this type of use actually would be um less intensive than a live-work unit. Because a live-work unit, you have the potential of somebody is there, living there every single day. Plus, if they are running a business that has any sort of external facing customers, right? It's maybe they're a therapist or maybe they are a uh an artist that has customers come in or they have subjects come in, like that is all a greater use than what just how the number of tables work than a short-stay type of hotel. Um, similar with parking. If you have a residential use and a commercial use in one property, you have the potential for twice as much need for parking than you would with this type of use. And obviously, a short-stay has zero impact on schools. Um, so we talked about all of those. As far as the rest of it, I mean, everything that is required is is documented within the site and the, the concept, the site and the um the, the plans with the county park and planning, which have been approved by county park and planning. I mean, at this point, it's, you know, waiting to see if this property gets developed.
Great, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anne, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, I don't. I, um, Nate's questions were very helpful. Thanks.
Okay, um, Darren, I assume you don't, since you were at the meeting. Any, anything you want to tag on?
No.
Okay, uh, open it up. Does anyone in the audience have a question?
Hi, uh, yeah.
Good answer.
Tracy, I do. Um, thank you, Connor, for talking about the, the impact and going down that list. Um, what is the benefit to Kensington of what is being proposed?
Sure. So there's, there's a couple of real potential benefits to us. One is parking. So as people are aware, when you propose a project and you give your mix of uses, in this case, it's mixed use, so there's a residential component, there's a commercial, a retail component. The county, because they have zoning authority, provides you what they, is your parking count, the amount of parking you are required to build and provide for your uses. We have asked as part of a community benefit that this developer, should he move forward with this project, that he overpark the project. So I think, Anne, please don't, I didn't memorize the numbers, but I want to say he's required to park something around seventy-five, eighty spots, and we're asking for like a hundred and fifty to be made, to be created. And each parking spot, um, the rough order of, you know, rule of thumb is that each parking spot's around twenty thousand to twenty-five thousand dollars to create. So we're asking for something that has a cost. And the reason why is that there's already a parking issue starting to bubble up in that area. The retail center directly next to it, which he has a partial ownership stake in. This is Wine and Company and and a lot of it, right? It's, it's, it's successful, which is a good new story. But it's also successful with a very small parking lot, because that's all the county required them to build. This would put parking and access to the parking directly accessible from that retail location. It would provide all of the parking he needs for his uses, but also looking forward to potential redevelopment as you move north along Summit Avenue. If those properties under our sector plan do begin to redevelop at some point. Right now, what, what we don't want to see, what the county doesn't want to see, is that every single individual little parcel has to figure out how to create parking for their small, independent little need. Instead, what is more efficient is to create a parking district. And so we are putting that burden on to this applicant and asking that it be created there. The other one, which is significant, but I hate to tell you because you don't largely see it, isn't, doesn't seem that exciting unless Leslie Fried is still on here, because I think she would agree with me. So Leslie Fried is from the Kensington Estates Civic Association. What is required of this property is stormwater management. They will be required when they redevelop this property. They have to capture one hundred percent of the water that comes on to that property. And they have to not only capture it, but they have to retain it and then create a plan to slowly release it into the stormwater management system so that it doesn't overwhelm the system. And so the net effect of that is all these flooding problems that we hear about, we see, we drive through, we, we hear from neighbors that happen along Summit and down Knowles, Draftmore, all of those areas that have massive flooding. Will this fix it as a silver bullet? No, but it will be required to capture and retain all of its water. And its water is obviously not going to be just its water. There's water flowing on to this property because of the topography from up by like West Howard. So that is a huge benefit that honestly will benefit Kensington Estates a little bit more than the town of Kensington, but it's a net positive for the whole community. There's other minor ones, right? They're going to create a plaza uh, you know, to activate the streetscape along Summit and Knowles that will include benches and lights and trees and um, there's um some street parking that would be created along Summit Avenue. Obviously improvements to sidewalks with green buffers to create safer pedestrian uh movement along Summit. As best we can along Knowles, but Knowles is a nightmare of a state highway, so we're asking them also to create a a safer pedestrian movement through the property that would allow you to get from Summit to the shopping center, uh, the, the Noel, the Wine and Company Shopping Center through a pedestrian walkway that would go through the, the ground level parking of that project.
Thank you. Um, and then you talked about the importance of um, real estate management practices. Um, you touched on making sure that the short stay is managed correctly and you, and you spoke of a real estate management um, company or concern that that is knowledgeable about these things. I wonder if we couldn't briefly tap into their um knowledge and at least have something in our statement about this property that would uh, that would describe it in some way, not expressing it very well, but, but to, to make them aware that we are. but, but to, to make them aware that we are aware that there are management practices, um, that are currently being done and that we want the assurance that they would be using professional management practices for this property.
Connor, I think we were going to check with planning and their experience with this type of usage in other buildings. Um, I mean, we are kind of relying on planning. Uh, Troy, I guess, would be the, the main point person on, you know, if this has been successful as well.
Yes, I have not yet reached out. I will, um, we can do it together, Detroit. Uh, to Anne, to your point, I, yes, I think with any letter that we convey, I think we can, that's our intent from the DRB. The DRB is simply making a recommendation to the council, asking the council to craft a letter that would be in general support with the points I outlined. And so to my councilmates, you know, doubling down on what Anne just brought up, that, you know, with that language, um, you know, trying to, uh, signal and point out the type of management items. To Tracy's point, um, I'd like to also get with Troy Lefwitch to see if he has specific items too that we maybe want to, um, highlight within the letter as well.
And I should just add to, to that, 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 um, well, two things. One is that, yeah, it is, if we issue a letter of support, that doesn't mean that they're going to approve the, the request. That this goes through planning staff review as well. Um, so it's not like we add some magical wand that will say, hey, approve it. They're, they're going to do it. They were going to do it anyway without the letter. And then the other, uh, thing I would say is that, you know, this, this project is fully approved as is with the twenty-five live work units. In, in the DRB discussion, um, I, I think there is an understanding that those twenty-five live work units also had operational management concerns associated with them too. So it, it, it's maybe a different set of concerns, but, um, I don't know that, that, that the change from twenty-five live work units to whatever it is, ten, fifteen short-term hotels is, is a, is a, is a, it, it's a different kind of concern, but it's, it's, it doesn't introduce a new concern.
Okay. Um, Leslie, I see your hand up. Leslie Fried.
Hi, thank you. And I, I appreciate having an opportunity to speak momentarily about the point of parking and thank you. Connor, you mentioned that, you know, parking is already an issue with Knoll Station. There's not adequate parking and that this would provide the, all the parking needed for the building to meet the needs. And looking at the parking on table thirteen, page forty-two, and I know this has already been approved, but I just have to say that there are seventy-five uni- residential units plus the twenty-five to be changed. And they say they are providing forty-eight spaces for the seventy-five residential. Now, I know that this has already been approved, but I would suggest that this is a point of concern that there's going to be a parking problem. And because none of the parking in the table even includes employees and what have you. And when we met with the developer two weeks ago, I asked like, where's going to be the overflow parking? Where are employees parking? And he said, well, on Summit, on the roads or what have you. So this, he is anticipating that this will not meet the needs of the building. And I know this has been approved, but I would urge maybe in your letter of support that there be something about control of the parking or meeting the needs of the parking, because it is going to be an issue. And, you know, people are going to be increasingly frustrated. And somebody at the DRB mentioned even that Stroh's Nighters folks, employees have been told not to park in that lot. So, and we see that parking elsewhere. So it's going to overflow, it's going to be a problem in the town of Kensington as well as in our neighborhoods as well. So that's it. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Leslie. Okay. Uh, Leslie Olson? You're on mute, Leslie.
Um, I recall that there was a drive-through that building so that you could exit on Summit. I know Connor mentioned safe passage for pedestrians to cut through. Is that changed or was that just preliminary? So that if you were in the parking lot visiting Petzhar Home, for instance, you could exit and go out and then get on Summit, go just cut right through as you can now. Um, is that not the case? And that's part one. The other is since this activity is supposed to increase more people movement around, is this a good time to look at the Dietrich, um, Knolls intersection? And see if we can't make it more pedestrian, safe or safe in some way? If people are going to be walking up and around the town, um, there, there is nothing that indicates, uh, crossing, um, you know, stop signs or anything if you're walking up Knolls across Dietrich. Really, on either side it's poor, but especially on this side, especially on the side of the new development. Is this a good time to, um, get that addressed at the same time?
Well, I will start with my thoughts, Leslie, going from your second point. Um, the town has engaged state highway and county DOT, but Knolls being state highway road that multiple times about interest in, you know, potentially a crosswalk, um, from Dietrich or, or site improvements. Um, and we don't get a lot, besides them just saying no, we don't get a lot of engagement from S H A on that concept. I think they, they are more in the feeling that it's, it would be unsafe to add pedestrians in a south to north, north to south crossing because of the, the, um, change in topography, right? There's an elevation change, there is a sight line issue. You have the east-west lane going from one lane to three lanes. Um, and the, the lane, lane going west, going from one lane to two lanes. Um, and it's a very difficult sight line. Nate, did you all look at it with the B, with the pedestrian access study?
Yeah, I was trying to save you some breath because, because I think that, um, you know, we, we, we've been meeting with S H A quarterly now. And our last quarterly meeting, uh, in December, January, they finally confirmed that they, that we did get them to study it. And it's not, it was recommended in the, in the TLC grant that we did for the Connecticut Corridors and the feeder arteries. But they are looking at that intersection, so it's good, it's a great time to do it, Leslie. And they're, they're supposedly studying not only the crossing of, of Knolls along Dietrich, but also crossing Dietrich on the north side of Knolls. Um, so I don't know how long that's going to take, but they are analyzing. And we've asked them to consider, um, the fact that there are, there's growth in that area and more people walking. Where is the best place to direct people to cross Knolls? It could be that they say teachers are all, don't let us not do anything there. Um, let's just make sure people are doing Connecticut and Summit Avenue. But, um, as far as I know, they're, you know, they are pursuing analysis.
I think one, Nate, I think one of their big thing is to the, uh, the side where Shro Snyder's is on the north corner there is a real problem because it basically stops and leads you right into Knolls Avenue. It doesn't take you around the corner to cross safely to the other side, from Dietrich to the other side. So I know they're looking for that. Leslie, whether they're going to allow a, a crosswalk across Knolls, I don't know. That's, that might be hard for them considering there are two crosswalks, you know, to the east and the west. Um, so they may not want to add us, add another one because of the problems that Connor has already indicated. So we'll see.
Crossing Dietrich.
I, yeah.
The Dietrich Knolls.
Right. That is when they're definitely looking at.
Crossing Dietrich is what, um.
Right. It, it basically dumps you right into Knolls and doesn't take you around, you know, to the other side. So that, that's definitely something they're looking at.
And is there a drive-in exit on Summit?
To your, to your first point, there is, um, in the proposed plans, there is an access point into the parking structure from Summit Avenue as well as one through the parking lot that, at the Wine and Company, right? So if you got to the end of the Wine and Company parking lot, right by Gelateria, obviously they would, it doesn't just drop into gravel and grass anymore. That would enter into the level of the parking garage. They are not perfectly aligned, they're offset a, a little bit. Um, so that it, their intent is to try and not make it a cut through. Uh, I've heard the developer be open to speed humps or other operational tools to try and mitigate or, or reduce the idea of it being a cut through. But he, you know, it is advantageous to be able to get, if you're in the parking, I will use myself as an example. If I'm at Wine and Company or Gelateria, it doesn't have to be Wine and Company. Uh, and I want to go home, or Leslie, you want to go home, right? Pulling through there to Summit Avenue and then going north on Summit and then across Plyar's Mill would be a really efficient way to do it. We could certainly go out to Dietrich, go up, make a left on Howard. It's just a few more turns. If it, if it works smoothly and safely, yeah, I would probably traverse through the property and make a right-hand turn on Summit. And I think that would be great as opposed to what I would not want to do, which is come out onto Knolls and try and, you know, and fight through all of that traffic on Knolls to go either way, whether it's west or east. So I'm looking at the plans here and, and so there, there is an ingress egress off of Summit and the parking structure. They're not perfectly aligned, but you would be able to get from one to the other.
Okay. I, I don't want to discourage anyone from talking, but, um, did we just lose Leslie? Other issues, uh, that, that changed. I hate it when it does that. Everybody's picture moves around, like now looking for them. Uh, I don't want to discourage anybody if they have any more questions, but I would like to move on. So, um, do we have a general consensus from the, uh, Joe? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Furman. Um, I, I was, I was wondering if the, uh, the language might be a little stronger rather than just simply signaling, um, the town's preference that perhaps the town could, uh, um, underscore the importance of, or if not require professional management for these, um, extended stay units. It seems like signaling is, is a little bit of a, uh, a weak verb in this context.
I get, and it was my choice of verbs. Um, yes, when we go to draft the language, to the, to the mayor's point, I'd like to get with county, uh, just to hear their input then. The recommendation from DRB is that we insert language that demonstrates with authority that we believe strongly success of any such use is predicated by professional management.
And this would be the first of its kind for the town of Kensington. Would it not an extended stay hotel type setup?
Yes.
It would be the first of its kind for either extended stay hotel or live work units.
So, you know, that, that is a further reason to want to be sure, as I'm sure you are, wanting to be sure that this is professionally managed and, uh, and done properly. Just another quick question. I noticed that the amendment description says that this could be a minimum of fifteen short-term extended stay hotel units. So there doesn't seem to be any language about capping this at a maximum. Does the DRB have a, a sense as to what that maximum might be if fifteen is a minimum?
Uh, so they only have twenty-five live work units to play with. That is the maximum. They are converting just what they need within their uses, commercial and residential, to, um, they realize that the live work units, the, that calculation of the work part of it wasn't really going to, pun intended, work. So they're, they don't need to do all twenty-five because the live work, the, the live side of that, the residential use is a viable use. So they will convert the portion that they need to maintain their, their distribution of commercial to residential square footage. That might not have been clear, Joe. I'm hoping it was.
So they could go up to a maximum of twenty-five then, if they say a minimum of fifteen.
Right, but what, so what they plan to do is keep the live part of it. Uh, they will convert, I think it's like ten into market rate apartments. And that will fall under the residential use, which is what half of each of the live work units is. It's the half of the live work units that are all designated as work. They need to rework that square footage into some other commercial use. And that is the proposed twelve to fifteen, um, uh, short-stay units.
Got it. I just am, uh, caught by the language of fifteen. A minimum of fifteen short-term extended stay hotel units. So it could be more than that, could it not?
It could be, yeah, but it, it, they have a finite amount of square footage. Part of it is when they go to do this and they have to work plumbing and HVAC and all that, they don't quite know, they, he doesn't know exactly if he's going to get fifteen units, sixteen units, eighteen units, twelve units, you know, uh, he's got to get engineers and architects to put that all together.
I, I believe his preference is to have, uh, rental apartments. That would be his preference, but he has to have this component of sort of a commercial aspect to it in order to meet the zoning. So if he, I have a feeling if he could, he'd turn them all into apartments if he had that ability, but he doesn't.
I'm just, I'm just quoting from what the, um, the amendment, uh, says. Thanks, Councilmember Furman.
Okay. All right, um, council, do you have a, are we, uh, in support of, um, DRB providing this letter with the, and he can send that around to everybody before we send it on. Am I seeing a nod from everyone? Do you want a motion, Matt? Are we good with, uh, just the nods? I think we're good with the nod.
I'd like a motion.
You'd like a motion? Okay. Connor, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, um, I move that the town council draft a letter of support for the statement of justification for one oh five oh nine Summit Avenue, incorporating the recommended points from the Development Review Board.
Is there a second? A second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Thank you very much.
Aye.
Thank you, Connor. All right. So we'll move on down to Sustainable Kensington. Uh, Nate and Anne.
Anne, do you want to have the honors today?
I will start. Um, I'm actually, I may call upon Alex, um, to help provide some survey updates as well. But, uh, the Sustainable Kensington, um, committee, since we last met as a council, um, did proceed with fielding a survey. Um, we had a good number of responses. I know it's gone up a little bit. So Alex, what was our final, um, tally over, I think it was over two forty or two thirty?
Yeah, so excluding, uh, excluding Kensington residents, or I'm sorry, excluding non-residents, we got, uh, two twelve, but I think the total came to about two two forty-one.
Okay, great. Um, so we were pleased with, with that turnout. Um, given that most of it was digital, though we did have some paper copies and we got some good input. We're still analyzing the results. At this point, um, Sustainable Kensington team is reviewing the results and putting together our action plan, which we'll bring back to the council for review uh, before submitting, uh, a draft version to Sustainable Maryland, um, with our final submission due in June. Nate, do you want to touch on what some of the highlights were from, from the focus areas?
Um, yeah, I mean, we, you mean from the survey or from just our discussion at the last meeting?
From the discussion with the, with the committee, yeah.
No, I think, I mean, you've covered it. There's, there's some sequencing we need to do between, you know, the survey and how that influences our action plan and then how that influences our submission. Um, but all, all I'll say is that everyone, some of the people who are, are in this meeting tonight have been very engaged. And, um, I just want to say that, commend the Sustainable Kensington group for getting very involved very quickly because it is a lot of work to put together this, including the hard work of Alex has done a lot to, to help us with the survey and answer all of our questions when we come here about documenting the actions. So just kudos to everyone who's part of the group. That's it. Another question?
Anyone, any questions from, uh, the council? Anyone, any questions from the council? Okay, Connor, do you have any questions? Okay, I see David Romeo, you have your hand up. David, if you're on mute, if you're talking.
Okay, thank you. I was wondering, is there any plan to publish the results of the survey, like in a column in the town newsletter?
I'm just kidding. No, we, we definitely want to. We just are trying to figure out how to run the reports on constant, from constant contact. But we will, we will do it. Exactly when to be determined, but hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we definitely want to share the results. I think they're really interesting, so we're going to try to summarize a lot of qualitative input in the open-ended questions. And I think there's some clear areas where people have interest. When we're just, like Anne said, we're just starting to look through the results because it took a little while to get them to all trickle in. But yeah, absolutely, that's the plan.
Yeah, we can actually, we could post them on our website with a link. And then we do have, we will be having a, the April newsletter. Thank you, everyone who got their journal articles in. There will be an April newsletter and then there'll be one for May and June. So they, because of the other things that are going on. So if we, the data is ready, we'll put it in one of those journals as well. But otherwise, there'll also be a link that we can send people and they can look at it on the, on the website.
Yeah, we could even just share the raw data. It's pretty, it's pretty, you can go through it. I think it's somewhat easy to digest, but we will, we'll make it into an article too. But one thing I just realized is I didn't thank all of the residents who submitted, business owners and workers who did the survey because I think their results were, were, it was pretty good turnout. So thanks, everyone.
In the survey, there was an option for people writing in their other concerns that they may have. And I thought if we could see some of those other concerns, then it might help people think about a sustainable Kensington in ways that they may not have thought about before. So.
Yeah, absolutely.
David, thanks for your questions. That makes me think, and this is something we've talked a little bit about with the Sustainable Committee team, really just to build out Sustainable Kensington web presence on the town website. So people can see not just the survey results, but you know, as the action plan is developed, what that looks like, how to get involved, how to link, you know, we can link to other resources. So that as we move forward, it's, it's easier for people to, instead, instead of always having to dig for what town journal article was that in, they can have a central place on the site with resources. So thank you for your comment.
Yeah, just one last comment is the survey asked for quite a bit of demographic data and I was wondering how, how is that demographic data going to be used or how does it inform the action plan for a sustainable Kensington?
Good question. We had quite a bit of discussion around that. And really, the reason we included it is because we wanted to know who are we reaching with this request for public input? Are we getting a diverse cross-section of community members? Again, we haven't gone to do the full analysis on, on the results, but I could imagine one way it could inform our work is if we see that was heavily weighted towards, you know, one segment of the population, one age group, one ethnic group. It could be useful to make sure that we have additional outreach to other members of our community to gather their input into our development of our plans.
Okay, sounds good. I was pleased with the numbers results you got. So, good job. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Joe?
Yeah, thank you. On those numbers, if I heard it correctly, there were two hundred and twelve Kensington residents who submitted responses. And then there were what, thirty-some who were from outside of town or non-Kensington residents? Is that right?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, and for Councilmember Angle, I was wondering if there any preliminary results from this secret poll? That, that really stood out to you, any highlights that really, I mean, granted, you haven't gotten into the data and, 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 you know, but what, what results really stood out for you? Or, or for Councilmember Lector?
Good question. And just to clarify, the two hundred and eleven or seven that we would consider valid responses were not just residents, but also if you were a business owner or a worker in the town. So, but the, gosh, I mean, we, we've looked through them really quickly, haven't dug into them. But what stuck out, at least to me, is that a lot of, a lot of interest in watershed preservation and restoration, which is something that we do somewhat, somewhat directly with the Weed Warriors efforts. But, you know, investing in healthy watersheds upstream or just what we can do around that issue was, was really brought to light. A lot of people have a significant interest in community composting and understanding greenhouse gas emissions for their own homes and residence, residential areas. Those are the three things that really stuck out to me from my, from my recollection of the, you know, the, the quick look at the results.
Yeah, and then I would also say interest in waste reduction and recycling and really examining our recycling program came out.
That's right.
Some responses.
Thank you.
I have a question, whether or not, thank you. Whether or not there were any comments that touched on something that's just starting to aggravate people, which is the noise pollution caused by blowers and mowers. And those who think in terms of environmental considerations also worry. For example, there's good information not to clean out your, your beds early, give the insects a chance to, to, to hatch and so on, because that is the beginning of the food chain up. And people are not aware of that, so the blowers are already out doing just that, destroying a lot of the area where the insects would be and so on and so forth. So there are people who worry about that, who talk about it on the site, not so much in Kensington. And I wondered if any of that showed up into a sustainable discussion.
It did. There, there were comments on the leaf blowers, as I recall, and also comments around exactly the point you raised about leaf composting and using leaf, leaves in town parks, for example, as mulch, leaving them in place, that sort of thing. But again, this is just quick review. I haven't really gone through carefully to analyze.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, not seeing any hands. Thank you all. I, I did sit on a meeting where we talked about the survey and it was really interesting. So look forward to when you get into the data and having the, getting that published. So it'd be great. Okay, I don't believe there's any motion required for the Sustainable Kensington at this time. Do you know when the compost crew is going to start, Matt? Do you know when that?
Yeah, we have not finalized the date yet. They, we have the contract. We're, we're good with the contract. Town Attorney Ferguson's good with the contract. I know there is a question about possibly moving it from Town Hall over towards the train station, but it looks like we're going to have to start in the, at Town Hall being with, so.
Okay. And then do we have the cans or does compost crew provide those?
They will provide them once we have a start date. So I, you know, just to be clear, there's only two sixty-five gallon toters. So think of your, think of your recycling toter that we, that town provides you. There's only two of those. So it's, it's not a lot.
Well, it's a start, so that's good. Okay, so we'll go quickly for council. If you have anything that's not on the agenda that you want to quickly add. I know everybody's been really busy, so I know one of the things is that is up in the air is still scheduling a Mobility and Traffic Committee meeting. So I don't know if we've got dates for that yet. But, so we'll go ahead and start with Darren. Did you, have you set a meeting for that?
We haven't set a meeting. We were hoping to get data or not data, feedback from the engineer about the sidewalk on Oberon before we scheduled the meeting. So hopefully that'll be soon, but I, so we're meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, so is finished for Metropolitan Avenue and Oberon Street. We should have that from Joe Kuter, our traffic engineer, sometime next week. And then we'll be able to proceed with scheduling then.
Okay, great. Anything else you want to, okay, Connor?
Just two quick updates. The mayor and I met with representatives from and County Councilmember Natalie, which is more of a development committee, bringing interest in, you know, is clearly voiced in the business community, not just ours, but around the county, that doing business in Montgomery County is different. And they were looking for specific test cases of recent businesses that had opened and they keyed in on Baby Cat Brewery. So I want to thank Terry and Sam for taking and being open to this about this happened with the county, but mostly some of the pain points that they experienced just trying to open a relatively small new business in town. So it was a very, very good and frank discussion. I think they left with a deep appreciation for the perseverance of our business and business community. And also a, an appreciation for, you know, I want to thank the mayor along the way for engaging different agencies within the county when our business district was running into these problems to help try and bring a spotlight to them or just, you know, get them shook free. So that was great. And then ironically, on the same day, we had the, the chance to go down to the Wheaton Kensington Chamber of Commerce had a kind of a meet and greet, open house here at Town Hall, which has been on hiatus through COVID. But it was great. I, I'd say twenty, twenty or twenty-five businesses that participated in the chamber were here. You know, meeting residents and, and explaining what they were and where they were located for the food and, you know, ones like La Jada of the event.
I was really pleased that we had more of our own Kensington businesses that were present at the event. Usually it's pretty heavy on Wheaton, so I was happy that our businesses participated. And I was speaking to some acupuncturists and I said, oh, so where are you located? And they were, oh, we're in the Giraffe Building. I just thought that was great. But on the, on the one for DPS, I actually listened to Natalie Fanny Gonzalez's meeting, her Economic Committee meeting, where the new DPS director was, was speaking. And, you know, there's a lot of optimism there. My only, the negative, though, is the amount of time that this could take because they'll need to implement probably some different software in which to run these, you know, these, I guess to keep track of all of their permittings. And then they have to train people. So, I mean, they were talking five to seven years. Now, that's, so that was a little bit disappointing. And then, of course, they, the county council is going to have to provide them funding for this. But I, I think there are a lot of things that they can do, you know, without the, the bigger project that they're going to have to undertake. But that was a little disappointing that it will, it will take that long. So, so we'll see. But they, they are going to implement some immediate things that hopefully will help a lot of our businesses to expedite some of these, these permits, so, which is good. Nate, do you have anything?
Yeah, just one thing real quick from the street bicycling access. Had asked us to review the pedestrian master plan that the county is going to be discussing in a meeting. The day or I think it's, it's next Thursday. And we.
Nate, your, your audio is all gargled.
Yeah.
Is it better now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, just make a weird face or put your hand up if it's not working, so I'll be quick.
It was just me and then finally I saw Tracy Leaner here and I said, oh, it's not just me.
So, so yes, the, the, the working group has been reviewing it and we are definitely recommending to do some testimony. I would probably recommend to do both and written and oral. And if it's oral and I can make it, I'll do it myself on behalf of the town. But I'll provide the, you know, the language for our testimony later this week or early next week. It's due Wednesday at noon if we're going to submit.
Okay, good. That'd be great. Thank you for doing that. Anne, or I'm sorry, Nate, you have anything else? Are you, okay, Anne? Anything else, Dad?
Just a quick Greenscape Committee related announcements. I want to thank Catherine Wood again for organizing another successful Weed Warrior event this weekend. They've done a lot along the Silver Creek Bank from Clum Kennedy Park down to Kent. And I also want to announce that the Greenscape Committee will be bringing Conservation Montgomery to Kensington on Saturday, April twenty-ninth. There will be a tree care workshop from ten to twelve, mostly centered at Clum Kennedy Park to teach residents the basics of tree care and maintenance. We'll be sending out information on how to register for that workshop soon, but wanted to announce it here.
And I, I think it's limited to what, twenty-five people? Is that correct? And the town is covering the, the cost, is that right?
Yes, we hope the town can cover the cost. We're confirming what the, the final price tag is. Be that soon, but that's the plan.
Okay, good. It's, it's not that expensive, but we don't want people to have to, to, we want to encourage people to come and not be limited. So, good. Okay, any questions on any of the reports that the, that the council gave? Otherwise, we'll move on to the town manager and staff. Okay, Matt?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. At the February council meeting, the council concurred to have the town staff proceed with filing a legislative bond initiative for one oh five, one oh five nineteen Summit Ventures LLC for a forty-eight public parking spaces within the public documents you received.
It's one oh five oh nine.
One oh five oh nine, I'm sorry. One oh five oh nine Summit Avenue, Summit Avenue, which is under Summit Venture, Summit Ventures LLC. The bond initiative that we filed with Senator Jeff Wallstriker's office was available in the public documents. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay, thank you. And the second item?
Sure, we received two bids for our bridge engineering and design proposal. Our consultant, WRA Engineering, is currently reviewing the bids. We believe we're, we were, we're about to award a bid. We just need to clarify a few questions with one of the engineering firms, but I anticipate moving forward with Brutus and Associates at the April council meeting for the bridge design and engineering management. Within the schedule that they submitted, it looks like the RFP for construction should go out sometime in October of twenty twenty-three.
Okay. Thank you. Council, do you have any questions with the two reports from the town manager? I don't see, anybody in the audience have a question? Joe?
Yes, thank you. On the, on the bridge project, I'm glad to see it's moving forward. Will the work be sequenced in, in some sort of order? Because there are three bridges, right, in the south part of town?
Yes, three.
Okay, and will they all be done at one time? Are they going to sort of sequence them one after the other?
I cannot answer any construction-related questions at this time. Once we have the design and the engineering from the bid that we just received, they'll put together a proposal and then we'll have a better idea of the timing and the schedule for the construction.
And the construction would begin at the earliest in October twenty twenty-three or is that?
No, the bid, the bid to hire a construction firm would go out in October.
Okay, so we're looking at next year, twenty twenty?
Looking at twenty twenty-four. Looking at twenty twenty-four, correct? Okay.
Okay, alright, I don't see any other hands. So we can, uh, Matt, do you have anything else? Susan or Alex, you guys good? Yeah, okay, alright, uh, we'll go ahead and move on to ordinance resolutions and regulations.
Uh, mayor and council, uh, before you this evening is ordinance budget ordinance number oh dash zero one dash twenty twenty-three. An ordinance of the mayor and town council of Kensington to appropriate and adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. That's fiscal year twenty-four budget and to levy a tax on certain real and personal property under the provisions. Of the tax property article of the annotated code of Maryland. Uh, we are not um planning to raise any taxes. Um, the personal and real property taxes are all uh staying the same. Um, it's, I believe, this is the fifth consecutive year. We're keeping taxes um at the current rate. And we're asking that the mayor and council set the public hearing for Monday, April tenth, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, alright, uh, we are not going to talk about the budget today. Uh, go ahead, Nate, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to note that all of these references to the April tenth meeting, I thought were not valid, because wouldn't be on the eleventh.
No, we, well, everybody said they could make it.
Oh, they did, okay.
I'm sorry. Yeah, that well, not everybody replied all. I'm sorry. Yes, we are going to be able to meet on the tenth.
Okay, that's fine, okay.
Yeah, so thank you, especially the ones with children uh for coming back in time, so we can have our meeting on the tenth. Because that is during uh spring uh, spring break, so. Anyway, so we're good. Okay, uh, so I, we need a motion to uh for the budget to set the hearing date for April tenth.
I move that uh we set a public hearing date for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget for Monday, April tenth, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Matt, make sure you send the budget to Carrie Ann tomorrow so she can get it into the journal.
Sure.
Number two.
Um, council before you, uh, this evening is resolution number R dash zero five dash twenty twenty-three. Resolution of the mayor and town council of Kensington approving a variance to encroach one foot, five inches into the ten-foot. Side yard setback for a dwelling on land zone for single family use at thirty-four eighteen Oberon Street in accordance with section five dash one oh four B. Of the town code. This is the variance that we held a public hearing for at the February thirteenth council meeting. The council concurred to move forward with the approval and we would request a motion for approval of resolution R dash zero five dash twenty twenty-three.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about the resolution? Okay, I don't see any. Uh, Leslie?
Um, just to note, on the copy that was sent out with our information, the address was listed incorrectly. It was listed as thirty-eight fourteen. It's mentioned about five or six times, and when you sum up everything, the numbers were um. Transposed, so it actually reads thirty-eight fourteen in several places. As opposed to forty-four eighteen.
Just okay. Thank you for making that note. You got that, Matt?
But I'm not clear, was this on the resolution or? Oh, okay.
And um.
Yeah, the finding of facts section has it listed both twice, transposed. We just need, uh, we'll note it in the motion that the correct address is thirty-fourteen.
Okay. Alright, I don't see any other.
Transposed in number one, yeah.
Okay. Connor, do you want to make a motion?
I will. I move that we adopt resolution R dash zero five dash twenty twenty-three. Uh, with an amendment that any references. Uh, that all references be corrected for the address of thirty-four eighteen Oberon Street.
Okay, is there a second? Nate, thank you. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much. Matt, number three?
Uh, I'm gonna ask Alex to share her screen for resolution number R dash zero six dash twenty twenty-three. This resolution was not included with the public documents. Um, we were clarifying um a number of questions and the resolution was completed this afternoon. Uh, this is a resolution that would allow us to add additional um signs at the intersection of Saint Paul and University. Boulevard um notifying motorists of our do not enters from six AM to nine thirty AM on Monday through Friday. Uh, these signs will be used as supplemental signs. Following the meeting that we had with Montgomery County Department of Transportation. Uh, we continue to have issues where vehicles in the six AM to nine thirty AM time zone. Are coming westbound on university, turning south onto Saint Paul Street. And then proceed to turn east down on McComas to circumvent our do not enters. Um, and at the recommendation of MCDOT and in a conversation we had with um Mark Terry and our traffic engineer, Joe Kutrow. We believe that this will help um alleviate some of the traffic and cut through traffic. That Kensington Heights is experiencing. Um, the resolution also does allow us uh through separate traffic orders. To also add additional signage if we find that these are not alleviating. The stress that Kensington Heights residents on McComas are facing. Um, I know council member Bartram. Has been talking about this for a number of years with the residents on Saint Paul and McComas and the traffic committee. And now the Mobility and Traffic Committee has has discussed this previously as well.
Do the people on McComas have a way of getting home besides Saint Paul Street? They're coming down?
Yes, they could take Hobson or Drum off university. Um, you know, this doesn't prevent westbound university traffic from turning on to Hobson or Drum in the morning. Um, but it does prevent traffic from turning south onto Saint Paul.
Okay, so if you just turn earlier, you could find your way around to get home. Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Which, yes, but I will note it's usually bailout traffic as they approach Saint Paul and realize that traffic's backed up.
No, I understand.
Yeah, no, it's.
I I just had spoken to a resident and she was concerned about how she could get home, but there are options. That's that's all I.
There are. Yep.
Okay. Alright.
This is a morning restriction only at six AM to nine thirty AM only. Uh, so you're mostly dealing with morning cut through traffic that's trying to reach Flyers, Noah Metropolitan Avenue.
Okay. Alright, does someone want to make a mo- uh, does anybody have any other questions in the audience? Go ahead.
Let me make a couple, let me flag a couple of things that I I think are important to note. First of all, we have been talking for this a while. We we've um. Sort of became aware of the issue with the advent of ways and and mapping software that that routed people this way. Then, just as we were sort of getting on the verge of making a recommendation, COVID hit and our ability to measure traffic. And the cut through traffic volume itself plummeted. So it's, it took a hiatus, but with the traffic back, we've been uh considering how to proceed. And uh. While we would normally send these issues to the traffic committee. Um, they've, we've talked about it numerous times at the traffic committee. But in this case, Montgomery County DOT has come to us and said that they themselves took a a traffic count on the thirty-four hundred block of Farragut. Outside of town. And the numbers of of the volume on that street, which is narrow, curved and and hilly. Was such that they requested that we move the signs up to Saint Paul. And so I think in the spirit of cooperation with with the county. That that warrants our uh approval.
Okay. Thank you, Darren. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, would somebody like to make a motion?
See.
I I don't see any hands.
Oh, I'm.
Oh, I'm sorry, Leslie, go ahead.
The council, this is just an observation. Um, if you're southbound on on Connecticut and you want to turn on to Saint Paul routes of the time. You've got um a bow in the road northbound Connecticut, so your eyes are on that traffic. Because the way the angle is, you're in that roadway for a long period of time before you actually hit. Saint Paul, so in placing the sign, um, that should be a consideration. Because I think most people will not see it until they've already started to make that turn unless there's an opportunity to put something on the median. Before you um make that turn. Once they do it, they'll see it, but. That um could be problematic if they hesitate or um. Slow down in any way. Anyway, it's a um. You have to do the turn quick anyway, so you're not really looking down Saint Paul.
So the 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 resolution is, the resolution is pending the Office of Transportation Safety with the State Highway Administration approving. Signage within the meeting of the left turn lane. Uh, that's what we're waiting for. Uh, we met with Joseph um Moogs. Who's our state highway district uh deputy district engineer in January. Uh, he's aware of the request. And we are waiting for Utes's approval um. Prior to proceeding.
Okay, so state highway will be making the decision of where the best location is. Okay.
Correct. Um, it did not sound like they opposed this. They just had to go through the formal process, send up boots review and approve.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Leslie. Okay, can I um get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number R dash zero six dash twenty twenty-three.
Yep, is there a second?
I can.
Thank you, Nate. All those in favor?
Hi.
Alright, thank you very much. Uh, and we have the last resolution.
Thank you, council. Uh, before you this evening is resolution number R dash zero seven dash twenty twenty-three. Resolution of the town council confirming appointments made by the mayor to the Board of Supervisors of Elections. Uh, the mayor is nominating Martha Deal um for a one-year term. And March thirty-first before hate to wit for a one-year term to end March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And Robin Watson for a one-year term that would end thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, so any questions regarding the appointments? And the confirmations. Okay, um, can I have a motion?
I move that we adopt resolution number R dash oh seven dash twenty-three. Uh, confirming um appointments of Martha Deal, DeWitt and Robin and to the Board of Supervisors of Elections.
Okay.
Second.
Elizabeth.
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much. Alright, the last item on our other adjournment is public appearances. It's the opportunity. For anyone on the call who would like to bring something up that is not on the agenda. There are any hands? Okay, I'm not up.
Thank you. Um, there was last week a copper color discharge into Silverbrook in the south end of town. Um, I was just wondering if the, uh, if there was any clarification or resolution about this matter? I knew this one knows about it.
Not at this, no, Silver Creek, um, not at this time.
Silver Creek.
Um, we we've, we've made a report to to DE. Um, just through a basic service request, and I don't have a update at this time.
Whereabouts was that?
Um, it was the entire, it actually was the entire creek bed. Um, so Joe notified Nate on Friday that it was down towards Kensington Cabin Park. Um, we had Andy, our code enforcement officer, review the creek and it was the entire length, so it was, it appeared to be coming from upstream.
Matt, I just curious, so Joe and I had this exchange, he asked. Is my volume okay?
Yes.
Okay, um, he had asked if there's a more, is there a direct line that residents could use to report this, say, for example, it was off hours, you weren't there. Council members weren't reachable to report something like this, because it does seem like it's. A fairly urgent issue if it's the entire creek bed, so.
Yeah, I would re- I would recommend that, uh, if this happens again, especially if it was on a weekend or off hours, to contact Maryland Department of. Um, environmental protection, uh, they oversee all waterways within the state of Maryland, so you can just make a basic formal. Service request through their website.
Okay. You know, that might not be a bad idea to to publicize somehow, because digging through their website is no fun. And if there is a direct link that you have or would recommend, that might be useful. In the in the event of something like this. And plus, it's been, you know, four days now. Friday morning is when I noticed it and uh. It's, I I just wonder when you expect to get a response from from the from the county?
Is it the county or the state, Matt?
State, whoever.
State D P, you state D P and it went in today, Joe. It did not go in on Friday. So. Um.
Okay, okay, okay.
Um, just a, just a um. Question about the format of the budget document that was before the council tonight. Uh, the substantive portion of it was like two pages. That seems to be. Less substantially less than in previous years. I- is is there going to be a more substantial, more elaborate document presented? Or is that the, what we saw tonight is what we're gonna get?
This is our standard introduction. It's the detail. Um, we will provide additional documentation. Uh, including the budget plan prior to the public hearing in April.
Okay, about how long in advance before the public hearing?
I will probably be released with the agenda on uh Friday, April, was it eighth?
Eight seventh.
Seventh.
So like what, three days to look it over before the council meeting that on the tenth?
Which is our standard process, Joe. It's what we've done for the last four years.
I'm just asking, I'm not.
And and the public, the public hearing is held open for an additional extended period of time. And staff and mayor council are always available to answer questions.
It's usually open until the, what is it, the Friday before the council meeting in May? Is that correct?
Correct.
Uh, is there any update on the um Brookside Garden Apartments um sale?
Nope, I talked to uh, actually talked to um Mark Elrich and he's looking into it. He didn't have an update from.
I thought there was a Realtor that the town was in touch with, McCarthy or McCarthy?
Uh, yeah, they represent the seller, not the buyer.
In any case, does the Realtor have any information that the town could pass along?
Uh, I believe we, uh, Matt, you reached out to him today? Okay, well, we plan to reach out to him.
Okay, because I thought that there was going to be bids uh submitted by just before Christmas. Thought that was the plan.
Correct. Merchant real estate is a lot different, Joe, than it is for residential. They may not have liked the bids, they like the bids they got.
Okay, they may have, but you know, who knows? That's why I'm asking for any updates.
Well, I don't, I don't have an answer for you.
And it seems like, you know, two and a half months would be sufficient time, no matter what the.
Well, I can take ninety, they have ninety days from the time anybody puts a contract on it just for um to. To do uh um, look into it for lead. I think I explained this last time, lead.
Anyway, I'm just asking what what updates you may have.
I don't have an update for it.
Alright, and finally, every year in Kensington's election, you're not just, I wonder what's with less than three months to go before the town elections, what uh? The incumbent uh council members who wrote for reelection uh have decided if they have. Council members Crimmins and Bartram.
I'm gonna go first, Nate, I got Connor, brother, I'm sorry.
You are the senior statesman.
Yeah, I guess, um, uh, Joe, you ask this question every year at this time.
No, sometimes it's.
I'm not sure it's. Oh, well, alright. Uh, I'm not sure it's time for my big reveal or my move that bus moment in Kensington politics, but I'll give you my early thoughts. Um, as of June, I'll have served ten years. Years on the one participated in other, it's like, you know, town committees and kind of pending meetings for even longer than that. Somehow I became the old guy on the council. Um. That said, I I absolutely love the council that we have. Uh, first with Connor and then Nate and Anne. Um, we have the younger, newer residents who are. Stepping up to serve and offer their insights and ideas to the town. Um, what has that gotten us? It's gotten us uh an expanded nighttime environment. Uh, it's gotten us, including breweries. Um, it's gotten us renewed focus on pedestrian and bicycle. It's gotten us renewed focus on pedestrian and bicycle safety. It's gotten us a committee focus on racial justice. These have all made us a better community in ways I couldn't have done. And they've done it with the help of respect for the history of the town that we've all moved into. So I imagine this evolution will continue. I'd welcome the chance to continue. That's the point of elections, periodic reviews of our judgment and vision that we've exercised during our term. If somebody younger comes along who'd like to have their own turn to helping know the town's future, I'd welcome that. It would give me more time to go sailing and take my dogs to the dog park. It, in honor of Jack Gaffey, I'd like to say that what we do isn't rocket science. It just requires a willingness to learn the issues, talk to residents to hear their concerns and make judgments on how to move forward. So I, I haven't made a decision. I think I've just given you a very long-winded, we'll see.
So it sounds like with the younger candidate, you might step aside. I hear you correctly.
I, I think if I see somebody exciting coming along who wants to contribute the way other people have, I, I think, I think ten years is a long time. I, I think fresh blood is a good idea, so we'll see.
Okay, is there an age cutoff, though?
We'll see.
Can I just say ditto? Will you let me get away with that?
Want to end the meeting?
I didn't hear, your, your audio was echoing.
So I, I said, can I just get away by saying ditto to Darren's comments?
It's up to you. Here's the council.
Uh, no, yeah, no, um.
Sounds like he had a prepared statement, by the way. But I, I don't.
I enjoy hearing what he has to say because there's something he said one cycle, two cycles ago, which is, and I, and I think about this every time I come up, is this seat doesn't belong to me, just like it doesn't belong to any of us that are on the council. I feel very fortunate that I was elected and very fortunate to be reelected two times. I love the work that we do. But more than that, I absolutely love the people that I'm doing it with. I think this, you know, we have a fantastic council that, to all of Darren's points, really goes out of its way to hear from as many residents and non-residents as possible when it affects their lives as well in the pursuit of trying to make the town a better place. I will tell you that, you know, I could do this all day long. I have other priorities that I have to check in with because I enjoy being married to her. And you know, I got kids, I got a company, I'm getting in a master's degree, but it has been working because I've got wonderful councilmates who have taken up the mantle on their positions. And that work has been spread more so than it has sometimes in years past. And so I would foresee that I will run again. I mean, I will tell you, hands down, this is one of the things I am most passionate about. I absolutely love representing the town and the work that we do. And to Darren's point, so if you look around, I really take pride in the fact that we're, we're making it a better place to live every single day. And I had a conversation with my twelve-year-old recently. This is a weird story, but we went to pick up a mattress from another part of the county, very nice part of the county. And we were talking about its similarities, its differences, and it struck me because he very immediately was like, Dad, I, it's like these, the houses are great and they're huge and beautiful and this and that, but he's like, Dad, but they don't have a town. Right? Like, that's what's most important to my twelve-year-old. He now has a debit card. He loves going down to Deli Club and buying a sandwich or going down to Old Town Market and grabbing a soda and meeting up with his friends at St. Paul Park and unfortunately going to Seven Eleven and buying a bunch of junk food. But the point is, like, I, he turned to me to just say, like, I love where I live and I love the fact that you're helping make it. And so it's kind of hard to say no to that.
All right, thank you. Eloquent. Thanks.
So you, you, you may have just, yeah, you may have just given me my reelection speech, so thanks.
I, I think.
Melissa, I'm going to, I'm recording.
Darren and Connor have done a great job on the council, but they, you know, particularly what Finn was saying regarding as a community, you don't feel that when you're in the middle of a big neighborhood. I don't know why, but I grew up in Arlington County and I, like, I belong to a community like I do here. It's just really, it's just different. And it's really a great feeling, so. Anyway, all right, well, any other questions from the public before we close out tonight?
Tracy, hi, I'd just like to echo or to say, listening to Connor, I really appreciate our town council and our staff and the difference that you make, a very real difference that you make. And I just wanted to say thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank you, Ann. It's, it's definitely what you call a labor of love.
Yes.
You know, we're, we're residents too. We, so we want things to be nice, you know, not just for us, but for, and, but there, there is a balance and unfortunately, we sometimes have to make decisions that people may not like, but that's just, that's part of the job, so, but I think everybody knows that we all love our communities, so it is. We just be disagree on a particular issue, but it's not because we don't love our community. We love it very much, so. Thank you, thank you, Ann. All right, well, if there are no other questions for the council, then we will, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to.
I beat you to it.
This is why we need to be in person. Everybody's talking over everybody. So I'm going to let Nate go because he hasn't made a motion. Go ahead, Nate. Not as many motions.
I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, is there a second? Ann's got a second. She wants to go home. She's home already. All right, all those in favor? Okay, I hope to see you all on Thursday. If we're going to carpool, let me know. We have to be there at six thirty down at the council building.
Yeah, let's carpool.
Okay, our pool sounds good. All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.